All right, I want to welcome everyone back. We're going to begin with Agenda Item 14. Individuals that signed up to make comments on this item should please call in at this time. I'm going to turn it first to a staff presentation, then we'll go to our public speakers.
Good afternoon, Chair Fletcher and Supervisors. I'm Regina Ochoa with Planning and Development Services. Today, Ashley Smith and I will be presenting on Item Number 14, which is the Appeal of the Environmental Determination for the North County Environmental Resources Project. The environmental determination was appealed by four groups: the Twin Oaks Valley Community Sponsor Group, Hidden Meadows Community Sponsor Group, City of Escondido, and Montrose Homeowners Association. PDS is before you today recommending denial of the appeals and to uphold the environmental determination for the project. The project's site, outlined in yellow, is located west of Interstate 15 within the Twin Oaks Valley community and I-15 Design Review Corridor of the North County Metropolitan Subregional Plan area. The city of Escondido abuts the project's site to the west. The applicant, Hilltop Group, proposes to construct and operate a recycling facility that would engage in three forms of recycling: tree waste chipping and grinding, recycling of wooden construction debris, and recycling of concrete, asphalt, and inert material from demolition projects. The project would include the construction of two recycling buildings and associated site improvements as shown on the screen. The project includes a site plan, which is required for community design review, and a boundary adjustment to adjust lot lines within the project's site. The site plan permit and boundary adjustment are discretionary actions of the Director of PDS. The Director approved the permits on November 3, 2020. As part of the discretionary review, the county is required to evaluate the project's impacts on the environment in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA. As part of the SEQA review, there are different environmental determinations that can be made, including a determination that a project qualifies for an exemption, or if a project does not exempt, preparation of a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration, or environmental impact report. On June 25, 2020, the zoning administrator determined the project qualified for a 1-5-1-8-3 exemption, which applies to projects that are consistent with the community plan, zoning, and general plan policies for which an EIR was certified. Additional review is not required for these projects unless there are impacts peculiar to the project. A peculiar circumstance or impact generally occurs when there is a physical change belonging exclusively or especially to a project, or if it is a characteristic of only the particular project, such as unique topography or location. The zoning administrator determined the project is consistent with the general plan and that no peculiar or significant impacts beyond what was already identified in the general plan EIR would result from project implementation. The project impermanent approvals with the environmental determination were appealed to the Planning Commission, which upheld the project approval and 1-5-1-8-3 environmental decision. Today, the Board is being asked to consider the appeals of the environmental determination. The project impermanent approvals are not before the Board for consideration, as they are Director's decisions which are appealable to the Planning Commission but cannot be appealed to the Board. While the Board cannot approve or deny the project, the Board can take one of the following options: One, the Board can deny the appeal and uphold the zoning administrator's environmental determination. If the appeals are denied, the Director's decision approving the project will become effective. Or Two, grant the appeals and remand the environmental determination to the zoning administrator for reconsideration. The Board may direct that the 1-5-1-8-3 analysis be revised, or that a new environmental document be prepared for the project, such as an EIR or mitigated negative declaration. If the Board directs the preparation of an EIR or mitigated negative declaration, the Board will need to describe the specific impacts resulting from the project or due to the project's location that are peculiar and were not analyzed in the general plan EIR. If the appeals are granted, additional environmental analysis will be performed. Any new environmental determination could be appealed to the Board again. The Twin Oaks Valley Community Sponsor Group, Hidden Meadows Community Sponsor Group, City of Escondido, and Montrose HOA filed separate appeals of the environmental determination based on a number of concerns: compliance with SEQA Guideline Section 1-5-1-8-3, reliance on the general plan EIR, and location of the project within the Draft North County Multiple Species Conservation Plan, or MSCP, area. The appeals state that the project is not eligible to use a SEQA Guideline Section 1-5-1-8-3 exemption, and that an EIR should be required for several reasons, including that Section 1-5-1-8-3 does not apply to industrial projects, the county previously prepared an initial study and determined the project would require an EIR, and that the project will result in peculiar impacts. As part of the 2011 general plan update, the land use designation for the project's site was changed from residential to industrial. A recycling facility is allowed within the industrial zone and is consistent with the general plan. Section 1-5-1-8-3 requires a streamlined environmental review for projects that are consistent with the existing zoning and general plan for which an EIR was certified. Further, Section 1-5-1-8-3 is not limited to residential projects. The county previously anticipated an EIR may be needed and issued a notice of preparation in 2014. However, following a review of the technical analysis, it was determined that there would be no significant impacts that could not be mitigated, and that reliance on SEQA Section 1-5-1-8-3 was appropriate. Staff prepared a 1-5-1-8-3 checklist in September 2019 after the technical reports for the project had been completed and reviewed, which determined the environmental impacts of the project were addressed in the general plan update EIR, and that the project would not result in peculiar impacts. The next several slides will further discuss the project's consistency with Section 1-5-1-8-3 and consistency with the general plan update EIR. Air quality impacts from construction and operation of the project were evaluated and found not to exceed the county's threshold for each of the air pollutants. Air pollutants include particulate matter, nitrogen oxides, and volatile organic compounds that can cause health impacts on people. Based on the analysis, the project will not impact surrounding residences due to the prevailing wind direction and steep terrain between the project and the closest residents. Furthermore, as a condition of project approval, the processing of materials is required to be conducted indoors, which will further reduce the project's potential air quality impacts. In addition, the project is consistent with the regional growth projections and the regional and state air quality plans which identify the pollution control measures needed to maintain air quality standards. The project will reduce GHG emissions during construction and use as a recycling facility. The California Air Pollution Control Officers Association, or CAPCOA, recommends a 900 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year screening level to determine the size and type of projects that would have a less than cumulatively considerable contribution of GHG emissions, and therefore do not require further analysis or mitigation. The GHG assessment determined that the project would emit 378 metric tons per year, which is below the 900 metric ton screening threshold. In addition, the project is a facility that recycles construction and demolition debris, which reduces GHG emissions by intercepting construction and demolition waste, diverting it away from landfills, and converting it into repurposed materials. If the Board does not agree that the project will not have a significant GHG impact using the CAPCOA screening threshold, or if the Board prefers a different threshold be used, the Board could send the project back to staff to evaluate the GHG impacts using a different methodology or threshold. The applicant graded a portion of the site without authorization in 2008, resulting in impacts to biological resources. The implementation of the proposed project will include further impacts to biological resources. The biological impacts, including the impacts from the unauthorized grading, will be mitigated through a combination of purchasing off-site mitigation and through the preservation of onsite habitat within an open space easement. The project will not have a significant impact to biological resources because the project's impacts are consistent with those considered in the general plan update EIR, and will be mitigated through purchase of off-site mitigation and dedication of biological open space. The appeals state the project cannot rely on the general plan update EIR until all mitigation measures included in the EIR have been implemented. In particular, the appeals state that the Board voted in September 2020 to set aside its approval of the cap, and therefore the project's analysis under Section 1-5-1-8-3 cannot rely on the prior general plan EIR. In addition, the appeals state several other mitigation measures have not been implemented, including coordination with Sandag during updates to the Regional Transportation Planner, RTP, coordination with other jurisdictions, and accounting for the project's proposed land uses in the regional traffic and air quality modeling and forecasting. The general plan update EIR has not been affected by the cap court decision and is still available for use. Further, the project's GHG analysis did not rely on the 2018 cap. Regarding the RTP, the county has and continues to coordinate with Sandag on the RTP. In addition, the county has coordinated with the city of Escondido throughout the processing of the project. Regarding the regional traffic and air quality modeling and forecasting, the project's land use, which is industrial, is included within the regional forecasts and models. The project neither requires nor proposes a change to the industrial land use designation that was adopted by the Board as part of the general plan update on August 11, 2011. The appeals state that the biology report prepared for the project fails to identify the project's site as within the Multiple Species Conservation Program, or MSCP, boundaries, which identifies the project as pre-approved mitigation area, or PAMA. The MSCP is a long-term regional habitat conservation program that protects vulnerable species and their habitats while providing growth opportunities in the county. The county's MSCP is comprised of three separate planning areas covering unincorporated regions of San Diego. The county is currently developing the North County Plan, which the project's site is located within, however, that plan has not yet been adopted by the Board. The biology report for the project identified the project's site as within the Draft North County MSCP. The last updated maps showed Draft PAMA within the overall project's site, but not within the development area, because this area was used in the 1970s as a Caltrans borrow pit for the construction of Interstate 15. The county has engaged the public throughout the processing of the project. Staff held a community meeting on September 24, 2019, in San Marcos to hear input and provide additional opportunities for the public to engage. Prior to the zoning administrator and planning commission hearings, staff mailed public notices to property owners within 750 feet and emailed a notification list that included over 200 parties. In addition, 10 days prior to this board meeting, staff mailed public notices to property owners within 1,500 feet of the project's site and emailed the same notice to the notification list. Staff has met with stakeholder groups, including individuals and groups that live in the surrounding community, the Montrose HOA, and city of Escondido, and attended several community meetings, including the Twin Oaks Valley Community Sponsor Group, Hidden Meadows Community Sponsor Group, and I-15 Design Review Board during the processing of the project to answer questions and discuss concerns related to the project. Staff evaluated all comments regarding the project. Based on the analysis of the project as summarized in this presentation, all project impacts were addressed in the general plan update EIR, and the project qualifies for a streamlined environmental review pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 1-5-1-8-3. For these reasons, staff recommends the Board of Supervisors take the following actions: deny the appeals, uphold the environmental determination of the zoning administrator, finding the project in conformance with SEQA Section 1-5-1-8-3 as detailed in the revised statement of reasons for exemption from additional review and 1-5-1-8-3 checklist included as attachment I to the Board letter; and require the applicant to enter into an agreement to defend and indemnify the county in the amount of $750,000 and authorize the Director of PDS to execute the agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you for that presentation. Let me ask the clerk to please call forward our public speakers at this time.
Thank you, Chair Fletcher. We have 24 individual requests to speak on this item and three group presentations. We also received 150 ecomments on this item. Any members of the public that requested to speak on Item 14, please dial into the conference line now using the instructions that were provided to you. We will be calling speakers by the last four digits of their phone number. You will hear a notification that your call has been unmuted. You will then need to press *6 to unmute your phone. Each caller will be asked to state their name for the audio record. For the groups, you will have 10 minutes. For the individuals, you will have two minutes to address the Board. You'll hear the sound (beep) when your time is up, so please conclude your comments at that time. And I'll remind the public speakers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We're going to start with the applicant's presentation with the last four digits, 3600, and I understand that all three of the individuals are calling in from the same phone line, and we are pulling up your PowerPoint at this time. As I indicated, you will have 10 minutes to address the Board, so please self-regulate your time. And if that group could please press *6 to unmute their line.
This is David Hubbard. Can you hear me?
We can, and if you could have each of your speakers identify themselves at some point during the presentation, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Richard Giddings, Governmental Affairs Consultant. Carl Gailey, Hilltop Group, the applicant.
Good afternoon, and thank you for queuing up the PowerPoint presentation. Again, my name is David Hubbard, and I am legal counsel for Hilltop Group, the project applicant, and I am joined today by Carl Gailey and Rick Giddings. And our presentation today is intended to give you an overview of the project and explain how it fits in the county's overall waste diversion program, and we will also discuss briefly why the project qualifies for the Section 1-5-1-8-3 exemption. Next slide, please. The NCER project is a construction debris recycling facility. It will be processing tree waste, wood and construction debris, concrete, asphalt, and other inert material from demolition projects. There will, however, be no composting, and we will not be receiving or processing hazardous waste. The site is located immediately west of I-15, just north of Escondido, at a former Caltrans borrow pit. The recycling operations will take place on 18 acres within a larger 140-acre site. Next slide, please. As part of the 2011 general plan update, the County Board of Supervisors re-designated the project's site as high-impact industrial. At the same time, the Board also rezoned the site from rural residential to general-impact industrial M-54. These land use changes were taken into account in the 2011 GPU's final EIR. Next slide, please. The I-3 land use designation and M-54 zoning expressly allow recycling and processing facilities such as the project. For this reason, the project does not require a general plan amendment or zone change. It doesn't even require a use permit. And because the project is consistent with the site's underlying industrial zoning, it is eligible for SEQA exemption under Guideline Section 1-5-1-8-3. Next slide, please. In addition to being consistent with the site's underlying zoning designation, the project also advances the county's waste diversion policies. Let me just give you a few examples. Land Use Policy 16.3 states that the county should encourage establishment of additional recycling and resource recovery facilities in areas with industrial land use designations, which is what this project has. Conservation and Open Space Policy 17.1 provides that the county should divert solid waste from landfills in compliance with state laws to reduce GHG emissions and preserve landfill capacity. Conservation and Open Space Policy 17.2 provides that the county should require recycling, reduction, and reuse of construction and demolition debris, which is precisely what the NCER project is intended to do. And finally, Conservation and Open Space Policy 17.7 provides that the county should improve its rate of recycling by expanding solid waste recycling programs for residential and non-residential uses. In addition, next slide, please. In addition, the Integrated Waste Management Act now requires the county to divert 75% of its solid waste, and state law provides that local agencies shall maximize the use of all feasible source reduction, recycling, and composting options in order to reduce the amount of solid waste. The county's own Integrated Waste Management Plan provides that diversion of construction and demolition materials is essential to reducing dependence on the region's landfills. And the general plan provides that if the county can meet this goal, there would be no need for additional landfills, including the proposed Gregory Canyon and Campo landfills. Next slide, please. The project also advances the goals of the county's Construction and Demolition Debris Recycling Ordinance. That ordinance established a construction and demolition diversion program, which is intended to increase diversion of C and D material from landfills, conserve landfill capacity, extend the useful life of landfills, support construction and demolition project compliance with waste diversion requirements, and avoid potential consequences to the county if it fails to meet state waste diversion requirements. Again, the NCER project advances these county goals. Next slide, please. CalRecycle recently identified North San Diego County as a recycling market development zone. This project is perfectly situated to participate in the state-sponsored program. We would also point out that a recent study by the University of San Diego concluded that the city of Escondido was one of the few jurisdictions in the county to miss the 50% waste diversion target originally established by the Integrated Waste Management Act. That same study found that no jurisdiction in the county is on track to meet the new 75% waste diversion goal. The NCER project will assist North County jurisdictions to satisfy these state mandated requirements. Next slide, please. As staff explained, the NCER project meets SEQA Guideline Section 1-5-1-8-3 exemption criteria. The key there is that the project is consistent with its underlying zoning and land use designations as established and reviewed during the 2011 general plan update and its EIR. The other key component or key criterion is that the project not create any significant peculiar impact that was not otherwise addressed in that EIR or cannot be mitigated through the application of standard policies and mitigation measures. As staff explained, this project meets all of those criteria. That is the determination that was made by county staff, the zoning administrator, and the planning director, and confirmed by the Planning Commission. Next staff, please. I'm sorry, next slide, please. County staff has been studying the potential impacts of the NCER project since 2012. That's eight years. The applicant has paid the county more than $300,000 in fees to cover county staff review of the project, and those county invoices reveal that county experts in virtually every field have evaluated this project. Next slide, please. In addition, the county required Hilltop to prepare a host of technical analyses. These include a visual impact report, complete with visual simulations, two cultural resource surveys, a tribal outreach and consultation memorandum, an air quality and greenhouse gas emissions assessment, a traffic study, two noise studies, a biological assessment, a NAC catcher survey and movement study, a vegetation map and impact study, a hydrology and drainage study, a geotechnical analysis and addendum. The county also required Hilltop to prepare a fire protection plan, a stormwater management plan, a vector control plan, and a hazardous materials load check and materials plan. Next slide, please. After reviewing the various impact assessments, county staff determined that the project would not result in any significant peculiar impact that could not be mitigated through standard measures and policies. Staff also determined the project would not result in any significant cumulative or off-site impacts. Thus, the project qualifies for the exemption. Next slide, please. But that's not all. The planning director and the planning commission imposed additional conditions on the project to ensure that no significant effect would occur. For example, the project is limited to two outbound haul trucks per day on average. The project may operate only two pieces of grinding and processing equipment during any one-hour period. This assists in maintaining the noise levels well below the threshold. The project may only process up to 4,000 tons of material annually. All project operations must take place in enclosed buildings. All project-related truck trips must follow the truck haul route that was established by the planning director. That route takes trucks away from residences. The project's start time was moved from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m., and the project will produce activity reports and haul truck manifests, providing those to the county each quarter for three years, and these will be made available to the public. Staff has already explained that there is no merit to the contention that the Section 1-5-1-8-3 exemption applies only to residential projects. The fact of the matter is that Section 1-5-1-8-3 was amended in 1998 to cover all projects, not just residential ones. The fact of the matter is, is that Section 15183 was amended in nineteen ninety-eight to cover all projects, not just residential ones. You will also hear that the project's technical reports are outdated. That is not true. If you can go to two more slides, please. The acoustical analysis was conducted in twenty nineteen. The air quality and greenhouse gas assessment, also in twenty nineteen. The NAD catcher movement study? Yes, oh, I'm sorry.
Your time is up. You can wrap up.
Sure.
Just a couple of seconds?
The, sure. The, the evidence is clear that the project qualifies for the exemption. No substantial evidence has been brought forward to suggest otherwise. We would request that the board deny the appeals and uphold the decision of the zoning administrator. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the second group presentation. And this will be the group with the phone numbers, two six nine one nine two eight zero and three zero two zero. Going to go ahead and unmute all of those speakers. If each of them could please press star six and introduce themselves. And as indicated with the previous group, you'll have ten minutes to address the board and please self-regulate your time.
Oh, thank you. My name is Jim Shigala and I'm the chairman of the Hidden Meadows Community Sponsor Group. And we have a recorded presentation. And it will involve three parties, the other two of which are on the line. And so we would ask the clerk to start that presentation.
Thank you. We're pulling up that video at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jim Shigala and I'm the chairman of the Hidden Meadows Community Sponsor Group. And while this project is not in our area, we do have a number of homes that have the potential to be impacted. And that's why we are involved. Now, we have voted on this project several times. We've recommended denial of the project. We've recommended denial of the use of the 15183 waiver. We've appealed the decision of the director approving the project. And we've, we are appealing the CEQA finding by the zoning administrator. And we understand and appreciate the need for recycling and its importance to our society. However, we also feel that these facilities must be carefully located as there is a potential for serious impacts to less intensive uses. We'd like to discuss the general plan update of two thousand and eleven for a few moments. This, during this update, the High Impact Industrial Resident, Industrial Plan Designation were, and the general industrial zone were applied. Now, we understand and are aware that the plan and zone are not at issue here in terms at least of doing a rezone or general plan amendment. But the history of this unusual action and the issues that it creates are important in reviewing the environmental impacts of implementing projects. In the High Impact Industrial section of the land use element of your general plan, there's a description of the uses. And then there's a sentence after that saying, therefore, this designation may be incompatible with most village areas and must be thoughtfully applied in any location in the unincorporated area. In addition, the General Impact Industrial Use Regulation intent out of the zoning ordinance, third sentence says typically the M-54 use regulation would be implied near rail and trucking facilities or other locations where impacts associated with noise, odor and traffic would not impact on residential or commercial areas. So both the plan and the zone carry with it a warning that there should be some care taken as to where these are implied. So the basic issue here with this rezoning and eventually with the project is that this property is surrounded on at least three sides by residential development. And the other side is residentially planned. So many of these residential uses are downwind from the project, which means that they will have the potential of being impacted by noise, odors and dust. And in the case of this particular project, six days a week from seven in the morning to seven in the evening for an indefinite period of time. Now, we'd like to talk about the location of industrial areas. Industrial areas are usually located in groupings such as industrial parks. And the idea being generally you don't want them scattered throughout the community. This project is, is pretty well isolated and and essentially exists by itself, which we'll discuss in a minute. They're usually surrounded by light industrial or commercial areas that act as a buffer and they're near transportation facilities. So if you look at the location of this project in relationship to other industrial areas, you'll see that the two closest industrial areas that would be comparable to the High Impact Industrial Plan Designation are located where the purple arrows are. And that would be in San Marcos and in Escondido. And so they're quite some distance away. And what we have is an isolated piece of high-impact industrial planning located in this area. In addition, there are no, there's no light industrial, there's no commercial to act as a buffer to the impacts to the residential areas. You have the M-54 zoning and the High Impact Plan Designation. And right next to it, you have low-density residential. In terms of traffic or transportation facilities, this project is located adjacent to Interstate fifteen, but there's no interchange there. And in order to reach an interchange, you have to go north of Mesa Rock Road to Deer Springs Road and the Deer Springs Road interchange with Interstate fifteen. Or you have to go south down Center City Parkway all the way to where the purple arrow is, which is the intersection of SR seventy-eight. So it kind of comes down to that it does not seem to be, there does not seem to be a reason that this would be a location for High Impact Industrial Plan Designation other than the fact that this site is disturbed. So I'd like to go to the, some of the recommendations made. This is one of the documents going from the planning commission to the board of supervisors. And the red circles the, this particular property. The owner wanted I-3, the High Impact Industrial. He did, which he got. The community sponsor group is recommending semi-rural residential. The staff is recommending semi-rural residential. The planning commission confirmed with staff. The rationale with this, for the staff was no access to a main street or arterial road, significant environmental constraints and not compatible with community character or with surrounding land uses. So what we have is the three advisory groups all recommending that this be changed to SR four or this remain SR four. So what we feel is that this, these factors make the location of this zoning and plan designation unusual. And that it warrants a complete and careful environmental review, which can only be brought about through an E I R. And this definitely should not be a candidate for a streamlined environmental review process such as a 15183. Now, I will be followed by Vice Chairman Brett Sealy and our Secretary, Irene Garland. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shigala. The group also reviewed the environmental impact report associated with the general plan update. In the land use evaluation, heavy, high-impact zoning was not identified. However, the closest definition was heavy industry. And as you can see on this slide, zero acres of heavy industry were evaluated throughout the entire unincorporated areas of the county. So we believe the analysis of this project was not covered by the general plan environmental impact report. However, the project alternatives did include a specific reference to the project with a potential for a zoning change. Again, here, no environmental impact was actually evaluated. Only the fact that critical biological resources were identified in the area. Additionally, as part of the alternatives evaluation, the current use of semi-rural was identified as achieving six of the general plan guiding principles. And by shifting the project to High Impact Industrial, all six were removed. We believe that these identify peculiarities to the parcel and that a CEQA 15183 waiver is inappropriate in this case. The project is surrounded by residential zoning. The baseline environmental impact report did not review the zoning type. And the alternative analysis also did not review any specific environmental impacts. For these reasons, we believe a complete E I R should be required for this project. Next, I'd like to introduce Secretary Garland.
The environmental impact report provides us with a comprehensive analysis of the impacts the proposed project will have on the environment. And per CEQA guidance, it must be prepared if there is any substantial evidence to support a fair argument that the project may have significant environmental impacts. There is a lot of important information that the environmental impact report provides that would not be reviewed or analyzed in the negative declaration. The areas you see highlighted are the details that we would miss out on if we don't prepare environmental impact report.
Your, your time is up. I'll give the speakers just a few seconds to wrap up their presentation. If not, we'll move on to the last group presentation. And this includes
Oh, clerk, Mr. Clerk? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. But you said we had thirty seconds to complete it. We would just like to say that there are a number of parts, the part that we, you haven't seen. Many things which the environmental impact report would require that would be helpful in making a full evaluation of this project, which we're going to miss by using the streamlined process. Among those are the least, are the environmentally superior alternative cumulative impacts. Those are just examples. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the last group presentation and that includes the speakers with last four digits, two zero nine zero eight six one one and five zero seven five. And I'll ask each of those speakers again to press star six to unmute yourself and please state your name for the record. And with the other groups, you'll have ten minutes to present, so please self-regulate your time.
Chair Fletcher and fellow supervisors, my name is Aaron Erlich from Birding and Wile, your legal counsel for the Montreux Homeowners Association. Also with me are Tim Kennedy and Lisa Roner. We had prepared a group presentation with pre-recorded audio. We had confirmed on Monday with Ms. Weir that fifteen minutes would be provided to us. And as a result, our presentation corresponds to that agreed upon amount of time. So we asked that the entire presentation be respectfully completed based upon the representation of staff.
We'll go ahead and play our pre-recorded video at this time.
Montreux HOA is one-third mile from the proposed project. And while it is stated by the applicant that this won't be seen because of the elevation, it is just the opposite. The facility will be perched on this mountain just to the left of Scenic Bear Rock and at the same elevation as hundreds of area residents. Montreux opposes the E I R exemption because in two thousand and fourteen, the county determined an E I R was needed. This is a very contentious project with thousands of residents in the area. The project has not changed, but the county flip-flopped on this requirement, which has caused community distrust and is clearly one reason why so many supervisors were changed at the last election. The county has granted some small commercial projects a CEQA exemption, but it has never granted an exemption to such a high-impact industrial project, even in other areas where it is known for it. Can anyone say an industrial project like this will not result in peculiar and specific effects, not in the GPU E I R? Significant off-site and cumulative impacts are more severe than were analyzed in the GPU E I R. Mitigation measures required by the GPU, not mandated for N C E R. Consultant reports are outdated and incomplete. And finally, the analysis that was done used the wrong baseline for the environmental impacts because they did not look at a typical operation such as this, only reviewed the developer's initial use. We ask this agenda item be delayed until it can occur in person. It has been controversial since proposed in two thousand and four with overwhelming public opposition to the environmental impacts of this residential area in North County. There have been over five hundred letters of public comment over the past year of public hearings and thirteen hundred signed petitions exist, which you were sent new copies of this past week. The telephone system for participation has failed to allow public meaningful participation in the prior public hearings. The public has been left pressing star six and not being heard. The pandemic restrictions are nearly lifted and other local jurisdictions have resumed in person. Given the controversy of this project and the vast number of residents desiring to provide public comment, the board should delay this public hearing until it can occur in person.
The environmental review process for the N C E R project has been highly unusual and opaque. The project was initially proposed in two thousand and fourteen. The initial study for the proposed project proposed that there were not any potentially significant impacts and that a negative declaration would be appropriate. After much public pushback, PDS changed its mind and reissued an initial study on September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, which found that the N C E R project has potential significant impact in terms of eight different categories of environmental factors and that an environmental impact report was therefore required.
Consistent with the findings in the September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen initial study, the county then issued and published and provided to the state of California a notice of preparation, which provided that the county would be preparing an environmental impact report for the N C E R project. Neither the initial study nor the notice of preparation have been amended or changed and thus remain binding on the county. The county's policy, as shown on the right-hand side of this page, indicates that when an application for an environmental initial study is submitted by a project applicant, that the county automatically reviews that project to determine whether it qualifies for a potential CEQA 15183 exemption. Here, the project was applied for in two thousand and fourteen. The last update to the general plan was adopted in two thousand and eleven. Thus, in two thousand and fourteen, when the applicant submitted its application for this project, it is necessarily the case that the county determined that a 15183 exemption was not applicable. Otherwise, it would have indicated such in the initial study and would have never issued a notice of preparation that an E I R was going to be required and prepared for this project. Both the county and the applicant's response to Montreux's appeal failed to inform the board of supervisors that the applicant agreed that an E I R was required for the project when it prepared and submitted to the county an entire an entire draft EIR along with all consultant reports in 2015. After reviewing the same, the county responded to the applicant that there were extensive flaws with the reports in the draft EIR and that vast changes would be needed to those documents. Instead of resolving those problems, the applicant chose to have its attorneys and its lobbyists spend four years lobbying the county staff behind closed doors without any public notice or participation to push county staff to support a 15183 exemption, which the staff had already considered and lawfully rejected. The applicant did this so it could avoid the public accountability and transparency that is required when the EIR is published. The public was not made aware of the four years of lobbying efforts by the applicant until 2019, when the county published proposed findings for a 15183 exemption. More problematically, those proposed findings relied on the very same consultant reports that staff considered in 2015 and found to be unreliable. The extensive communications between the applicant's attorneys, lobbyists, and county staff over that four-year period of time was never disclosed or provided to the public. More problematically, though, because the initial study was never revised and the notice of preparation was never rescinded, it remains the county's obligation under CEQA to proceed with an EIR for this project. The application of a 15183 exemption to an industrial project like the NCR project is wholly unprecedented and has never been granted before by the county. The prior instances where a 15183 exemption has been applied involved projects that were zoned either residential, commercial, or agricultural, but never industrial. Doing so for industrial projects sets an extremely dangerous precedent by restricting and confining public participation in the environmental review process for projects with a zoning classification most likely of any to cause significant environmental impacts. Particularly, it should not be applied here when the county has already determined that an EIR is required because of this project's foreseeable significant environmental impacts. The NCR project is fundamentally dissimilar to any of the projects where the county has previously provided a 15183 exemption. Unlike the very modest nature of the construction and operation of the other projects subject to a 15183 exemption, this project here would involve the blasting and hauling or crushing of nearly 250,000 tons of rocks to create an 18-acre plant with multiple large buildings, a half-mile road built into a mountainside for large hauling trucks, and an operation involving extensive number of crushers, haulers, and other industrial machinery, all of which will cause an extensive number of significant environmental impacts, including air pollution, light, noise, glare, aesthetics, traffic, and other significant impacts that have not been properly evaluated by the county through avoiding an EIR. A project benefiting from a 15183 exemption must undertake all feasible mitigation measures specified in the underlying general plan update EIR. That hasn't been done here. Not only do the proposed findings for the NCR project fail to analyze how any of the mitigation measures that were specified in the 2011 GPU EIR were imposed on this project, but more importantly, there are a number of critically important mitigation factors that simply have not been required. Examples of those include aesthetics 1.6 that requires that when a project with significant potential to adversely affect scenic quality of a community, that community review and specific findings of community compatibility are required. Not only has there been truncated community review through the shortened public hearing process for this project, and more glaringly, the proposed 15183 findings do not contain any specific findings of community compatibility, which is precisely the focus of the over 500 public letters of comment from residents and the petition signed by over 1,300 residents indicating that the NCR project is simply not compatible with the surrounding residential and commercial communities. Other examples include aesthetics 1.8, which requires that the county develop and implement programs and regulations to minimize landform alterations and preserve ridge lines and steep slopes. As previously discussed, this project involves a blasting, hauling, or crushing of 250,000 tons of rock and the creation of a half-mile road built into the mountainside. The proposed findings failed to discuss how the county has applied any of their preservation programs and regulations to its review of this proposed project. Similarly, aesthetics 1.9 requires that the county work with communities to identify scenic resources and protect the same. Yet, here, the proposed 15183 findings do not discuss any actions that were taken by the county to mitigate these impacts. Noise 1.1 requires that certain projects that will be noisy, like this project, must have an acoustical analysis that is contemporaneously completed. That simply hasn't been done here. The 2019 acoustical analysis does not include any updated noise analysis, but instead relies on the draft unsigned and uncertified 2003 acoustical analysis. And thus, this mitigation measure was also not complied with. The proposed Section 15183 exemption findings relies largely on the same consultant reports that the county found in 2015 to be unreliable. Those reports have not been updated or revised since then. Those reports were largely drafted between 2008 to 2014 and thus are extremely outdated. Those reports also are largely indicated to be a draft or preliminary and are not signed or stamped, indicating that those reports were not intended to be relied upon by the county for public comment and for the environmental review process. The table below shows some of the most egregious examples of these problems. CEQA requires that the environmental impacts of a proposed project be assessed at the time that the environmental assessment began. The point of this is to ensure that the public and the decision-makers have the most accurate and updated information about the near-term and long-term impacts of a project. The environmental assessment for the 15183 exemption started in 2019. It did not start in 2014, when the applicant applied for the project, because the county no longer will follow its initial study and notice of preparation. Here, the technical reports that are being relied upon for the 15183 exemption were mostly prepared between 2008 to 2014. And thus, it's necessarily the fact that those reports cannot be considering the physical conditions at and in the vicinity of the NCR project site as of 2019, as CEQA requires. This includes some of the most critically important technical reports to Montreux and the public. CEQA requires that a proposed project's environmental impacts be assessed at the project's maximum permitted use. That wasn't done here. Numerous of the consultant reports rely upon the applicant's intended use instead of the maximum permitted use to analyze the environmental impacts. This naturally allows those reports to indicate that the impacts will be less than what will truly occur. Examples of this include both the acoustical analysis and the air quality and greenhouse gas emissions analysis. Both of those reports analyze the impacts based upon two export truck trips a day of materials. However, condition of approval number 61 allows the applicant to have not more than four outbound truck trips per day. Thus, those reports artificially limit the assessed environmental impacts inconsistent with the maximum permitted use of the project.
For the current group, that concludes your 15-minute timeframe that was allocated by the chair. And with that, we'll move on to our individual speakers. And if you could please call up the first individual speaker. Again, before she does that, for the individual speakers, you'll have two minutes to address the board, and please state your name for the audio record.
Our first speaker is 4556. 4556, please dial star six and unmute yourself.
Good afternoon. This is Mike Strong, Director of Community Development for the city of Escondido. And I'm one of two individuals that are calling in to speak on behalf of the agency in this appeal matter. The city submitted multiple letters and written materials in association with this project, including this appeal. These include the city's letters dated February 16, 2021, and letters dated October 14, 2019, and June 24, 2020. We ask that all the city's correspondences with the county on this matter be included in the administrative record. These correspondences express multiple concerns about the project, its operation, and its potential impact on the environment in accordance with CEQA. The project cannot be statutorily or categorically exempt under CEQA. County staff support of a 15183 exemption is not supported by our recent explanation based on substantial evidence. To do so would be a violation of CEQA guideline sections 15183C and F. The general plan EIR analysis is woefully inadequate for environmental analysis for tearing in that it provides no project-level detail, does not incorporate the zoning use list in appendix to provide broad coverage of potential implementation projects and variations between different types. It only provides one sentence reference to Section 15183 for tearing. Tearing was clearly an afterthought. ERs at stage 1 of 15183 clearance are much more expansive and legally adequate for tearing implementation. The agency's zoning regulatory tools are carefully inspected and analyzed, and so much of the general plan policy document itself. In other words, county staff erred in the assumption that the level of effort and analysis required in one context for the general plan EIR would suffice in the other for a specific land use development. There's no substantial evidence to support their assumption, and the fair argument standards have been met when considering all aspects of the public's testimony, including the fact that county staff added project-specific mitigation measures as conditions of approval to reduce the significance of several impacts. Environmental analysis at hand for this particular project does not provide substantial evidence to support the conclusion cumulative impacts would be less than significant.
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Our next speaker will be 4608. 4608, please dial star six to unmute.
Hello, Chair Fletcher and members of the board. My name is Kurt Whitman, Senior Deputy City Attorney for the city of Escondido, one of the appellant's in this matter. I want to focus my comments on one item, and it's a very critical item and a fatal flaw for the project, the Section 15183 exemption. Section 15183 does not exempt all environmental review. There are two major limitations to the use of the exemption. First, the county still has to analyze environmental impacts peculiar to the project. Second, the county still has to analyze off-site and cumulative impacts that were not adequately addressed in the prior EIR. There is substantial evidence in the record to support a fair argument that this project may have significant environmental impacts, both on and off-site. This is apparent from all of the public comments and materials submitted by all of the appellant's. Critically, the county has not indicated any evidence showing off-site or cumulative impacts were adequately addressed. For example, in attachment B to the board letter, response to appeals, the county completely sidesteps the issue. If you take a look at page B38 in response to the Montreux HOA's raising of the issue, the county merely cross-references its prior responses to the HOA on B27 through B38. But when you go to those cross-reference responses, there's no discussion, no evidence regarding off-site or cumulative impacts. If anything, there's only discussion project-specific impacts, and even that is not adequate. But no discussion of off-site or cumulative impacts as required by Section 15183J. So no indication in the record that those impacts were ever addressed for this project. Any assertion that the project has complied with Section 15183 is conclusory and unsupported. Conversely, appellant's have provided substantial evidence of these off-site and cumulative impacts. The 15183 exemption is inappropriate. Further environmental review is required, and the board should overturn the approval of the project and remand back to county staff so the project can be properly analyzed under CEQA. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker will be 5298. 5298, please press star six to unmute. 5298.
Good afternoon. My name is Cynthia Kennedy, and I live in the Montreux subdivision. I live in North County across the highway from the NCR project that is at the same elevation. Hundreds of residents like me will have a direct view of the proposed facility. One of my concerns is the mountain to the right of the project, where the road will be built directly below historic Bear Rock. The county staff incorrectly analyzed the effects of this building, of this road. At the time I bought my home five years ago, there was absolutely no disclosure concerning this project. One of the main reasons we chose this house was the privacy and the peaceful setting. This project will change the entire scope of Escondido. The wildlife will also be affected, and there is concern about how that will change the future of our county. The developer says they will blast for 100 days. I am a senior and very concerned with the air quality during that time, as well as the beautiful view will be replaced with a road where trucks will travel in and out day after day. I am very impressed with the new supervisors to the board and hope you will direct staff to complete a full EIR separate from accepting the developers' inaccurate reports. In conclusion, I would like to thank you for this time to share my concerns, and I hope you will take the steps needed to make the decision to not allow this facility to be built in this location without a full EIR.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be 8558. 8558, please press star six to unmute. 8558, please press star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Distinguished board members, today is an important day for many of us. With the overwhelming rejection of this project by incorporated cities, voters, citizens, and thousands of community members alike, you, our trusted electorate, have a difficult decision to make. You can choose to redirect and grant an appeal for this ill-advised and misplaced project, which will be embedded in the middle of rural residential neighborhoods miles from the near-similar high-impact industrial business in an extremely dangerous red-flag fire zone. Or you can go on kicking the can down the line, ignoring the voice and safety of the public and instead choosing deep pockets and shady business practices over the very people who elected you. The staff and previous council members' decisions regarding the project were largely passed based on the misconception that an appropriate EIR and zoning location for this applicant's project were determined. In fact, a review of the previous recorded council session regarding this matter will provide views as stated by the council members that the application was, quote, "highly peculiar" and being, quote, "cherry-picked." And that, quote, "a wink of the eye has been processed unwillingly on the council members and community." This is in the recording of your previous meeting. And Sandy, his own legal counsel, stated at the meeting that he, quote, "firmly felt there was a flaw with this zoning issue." Personal opinions were stated and justification and rationalization were considered over policy and law. And yet, after multiple council requests for a continuance and further consideration for review, a hasty vote was taken, the appeal was declined, and the can was kicked on. Your community and representatives have spoken. We hope you will listen and heed the voice of the members that elected and support you and protect the common needs and safety of our public. Our justice system should be based on facts and law, not access to wealth and resources. Your council have the powers vested in you to correct this very perpetual-
Sir, can you please state your name for the audio record? Looks like we might have lost that caller. We'll move on to the next caller.
The next speaker is 5819. 5819, can you please press- Five-eight-one-nine, can you please press star six to unmute? All right, we'll move on. The next speaker is two-two-five-two. Two-two-five-two, can you press star six to unmute?
This is Lee Sabatka, five-eight-one-nine.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lee Sabatka, and I'm currently a homeowner in the Montro community. And as you know, I'm highly concerned also about the impact this industry will have on the accidental fire event as a result of the operation. It's less than a half-mile from surrounding neighborhoods, which I live in, and located in a semi-rural, extraordinary hazardous fire area, exposing the surrounding residential neighborhoods to unnecessary fear and threat of wildfire danger. I drive by a red-flag sign frequently. I'm doing my best as a homeowner to pay for a high-priced zoning of fire insurance, but at the same time, I don't feel that the community is helping with the threat of wildfire danger by allowing this industry to be near homes. Regardless of the state mandate, the project should be individually reassessed and issues identified, especially in extraordinary circumstances. We live in a community that also has animals, and right now, it's spring, and all those animals are having babies. If we create a fire hazard within this community, it's not just affecting human beings, but as well as our environment and the growth of all the animals in the area. Thank you for listening.
I suspect we have two callers with two-two-five-two.
Two-two-five-two, go ahead.
Yes, this is two-two-five-two. My name is Vicente Gill, and I live in the Montro community. I am here to register opposition to the North County Environmental Resources Project as it is not a good fit for the surrounding neighborhoods. This project will add adverse, would add dust, noise to the air surrounding our homes, and it'll increase large truck traffic and noise on the roads of surrounding communities. I ask the Board of Supervisors to act on behalf of its constituents by calling for a full environmental impact report for this project. And I also ask the site owner, in the interest of being a good neighbor, to find a friendlier use of this site that would add value to the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be seven-nine-nine-two. Seven-nine-nine-two, please press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. My name is Erin White, and I am a member of the Twin Oaks Valley Community Sponsor Group and appellant in this matter. As a small volunteer sponsor group, we could not muster the three people required to make a group presentation during the workday, but I urge you to review the PDF of the slideshow presentation that was prepared and included in your packet. According to county maps, the N-C-E-R project site included, including the entry road, is on pre-approved mitigation area land. And the I-15 underpass next to the project links Palma Land on either side of the freeway. A small portion of the area was removed from Palma map after the applicant performed illegal grading, but the remainder of the property is Palma, though the biological report never identifies it as such. Palma Land has sensitive habitat linkages or wildlife corridors. The county RPO and NC MSCP do not support development on sensitive habitat linkages or wildlife corridors. The impacts of this project are not mitigated by the general plan update bio policies, as these policies implement the RPO and reference the NC MSCP. And as stated before, the RPO and the NC MSCP do not allow development on Palma land. Therefore, the impacts of this development are not mitigated, and the project does not qualify for the one-five-one-eight-three exemption, and an EIR is required. The Twin Oaks Valley Sponsor Group recognizes the potential environmental benefits of the waste reduction results of this project, and recognizes that the applicant has spent significant funds in furtherance of this application. Also, as the county did not identify this land as Palma to the applicant in its prior review, we request that the county investigate providing financial assistance to the applicant for the study of this issue in an EIR. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be nine-six-nine-seven. Nine-six-nine-seven, please press star six to unmute.
My name is Kasturi Rangan. This extensive facility will not be economically viable with shipment of only two truckloads of product per day. The product output and corresponding environmental impacts were understated to get approval. There is a lack of consistency in the statement and understanding of operating limits. PDS project approval is for processing a maximum of twenty tons per day of CDI debris. The capacity of the equipment is two-hundred-and-fifty tons per hour. Will it be operated only for ten minutes a day? The applicant's attorney interprets the approval as an average of twenty tons per day. The average concept would mean high rates with higher undesirable emissions on some days and low rates or no rates on other days. This more realistic average scenario has not been evaluated for emissions by the applicant. The applicant's legal counsel states that there are no facilities for recycling CDI debris in North County, and therefore, this debris has to be sent to Ote Mesa. He's incorrect. The county recycling guide lists five such facilities in North County and a total of fifteen in the county. The county's strategic plan to reduce waste dated April twenty-seventeen states that the existing CDI processing infrastructure has considerable capacity. The real issue is sorting of demolition debris to make sure that the sorted streams go to the right recyclers. The county is already taking positive steps to make sure that demolition permits are being conditioned to require sorting and that Hora guidelines prevented unsorted debris from reaching landfills. Therefore, better analysis of the proposed project's impacts is needed through an EIR.
Our next speaker is three-three-four-nine. Three-three-four-nine, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Sandra Farrell. I'm Chair of the Twin Oaks Valley Community Sponsor Group. You can please reference the PDF we sent to you earlier this week in Erin's comments. The N-C-E-R one-five-one-eight-three checklist doesn't apply because it did not identify the land as Palma within the MSCP boundaries, and in fact, the biological/technical resources report in two thousand and twelve states this land is not in the MSCP subarea. So there's a problem there. The N-C-E-R one-five-one-eight-three checklist does not identify the land as a wildlife corridor, and yet, there's an undercrossing under I-15 that could potentially link the Palma areas on the west to the east side of the I-15. The county required other projects using the one-five-one-eight-three checklist involving Palma land to perform the analysis of projects' impacts on conservation goals in the North County MSCP. So we're wondering why this one didn't need to. Finally, you know, we appreciate what the applicant spent. I understood that some of that time was used on the previous project, which was a nursery that this sponsor group approved. So we hope that this issue can resolve, and we ask the Board to, if it can, use county funds to do this last bit of study to make sure that we can not create a problem for habitat connectivity in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is five-seven-seven-six. Five-seven-seven-six, please press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. I'm Mary Ann Culkin, a resident in Emerald Heights here in Escondido. This project has been approved by the Planning Department and Commissioner without a full EIR. The zoning of this project is a problem, too. Where is the environmental equity and justice for your residents when there is a high-impact industrial plant allowed in a residential agricultural area? And what precedent is being set here? Please grant the appeal and remand the one-five-one-eight-three environmental determination to the zoning administrator for reconsideration, including any additional direction from this Board. The Board may direct that the one-five-one-eight-three analysis be revised, or that a new environment document be prepared for the project, such as an EIR. When the appeal is granted and the environmental determination is remanded, the project's environmental documents will be reconsidered by the zoning administrator, and additional environmental analysis will be performed, which could require additional public review. Further, any new environmental determination could be appealed to the Board again. Please grant the appeal, and do not set a precedent to let this kind of project happen again. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be one-one-seven-seven. One-one-seven-seven, please press star six to unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Dan Cannon. I'm President of the Emerald Heights Homeowners Association. I think I have a video that I'm being allowed to show. Are you there?
We are. Did you submit that video in advance?
I did. I've had it, I think, gave it to Regina Lutrowa, and also was sent to each of the County Board of Supervisors. It's a three-minute video showing the faces of our homeowners association and our view on the trash pile.
We have your video showing. We'll give you two minutes with all the other callers.
We are the community of Emerald Heights. The proposed industrial project could expose our six-hundred-and-ninety homes to noise and fire risk. Many acres of plants and an unknown number of animal species will be displaced by over one-hundred detonations of industrial explosives and bulldozing. This project warrants an environmental impact report. Last summer, our community wrote sixteen-hundred letters to the Planning Commission and County Board of Supervisors, along with a multi-community thirteen-hundred-signature-strong petition in opposition to this crushing facility. This spring, we're making signs and full-on protesting.
Thank you. The next caller.
Okay, hello, I'm here. Thank you. I appreciate it, and...
Our next speaker is six-five-four-six. Six-five-four-six, please press star six to unmute.
Hello, my name is Gloria Frank. The county is not following its own published policies. For example, the opening paragraph of the county's general plan website reads, quote, "This document is based on a set of guiding principles designed to maintain the character of its rural and semi-rural communities. How is the concrete and rock crushing plant maintaining the character of our semi-rural residential community? County's general plan, Guiding Principle Ten. Where significant debates occur, processes should be established for compromised positions to be reached. The Planning Department has not created any processes, nor has Hilltop compromised any part of this project as a result of our opposition. Land Use Policy LU eleven-point-ten. Protect high-impact industrial areas from encroachment of incompatible land uses such as residences. The intent of this policy is reducing future development conflicts. In reality, N-C-E-R is causing development conflicts because the residences were already here. N-C-E-R does not belong in this area. If the county government doesn't follow its own guidelines and rules, what is their purpose? How can we depend on any standards or rules that have been established when they are consistently reversed or ignored? How can anyone purchase land in a residential area, have it rezoned for industrial use without the neighbors knowing, plan to build a rock crushing plant on it, have the plan objected to by hundreds of neighbors worried about the environmental impact, and still avoid completing an EIR, all with the backing of the Planning Department? Something is very wrong with the situation. It's time to rezone these parcels back to rural residential and start over."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is nine-nine-four-four. Nine-nine-four-four, please press star six to unmute.
Hi, my name is Jack DuBord. I'm the VP for Montro HOA. I'll be speaking as a homeowner today. I've been living here in Montro Development for eleven years. Devastation to the mountain and the habitat across the way by a concrete crushing recycle plant is wrong. Its dust can be cancerous and will blow down the valley, over our neighborhood, then to the neighboring schools. This is the same path as the breeze as we have now, west to east, through the valley. I question the wind direction they say is not in our path, because it is. During Escondido High School, when it was in session last year and the years before, I can hear football games and band practice at the elementary schools. I can hear the bell ring, and I can hear the children playing. These schools are about the same distance to us as the concrete crushing facility site proposed. Imagine what that breeze will bring and how loud it will be. We truly need an environmental impact report. Living in this new green world, we are forced to be more conscious of these problems: bad air particles, noise pollution, our habitat, coastal sage, and more. I strongly support the appeal for a full EIR to be completed to analyze the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be six-five-nine-three. Six-five-nine-three, please press star six to unmute.
Been actively engaged with the N-C-E-R project review since two thousand and thirteen.
I've been actively engaged with the NCR project review since 2013. As of today...
Caller 6593, could please mute their TV or their video feed?
Air pollution emission quantities listed for the NCR facility are incorrect. Actual emission levels will be greater.
And we'll come back to this.
The next speaker will be 7333, 7333. Please press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon. My name is Todd Frank. NCR is described as consistent with the general plan, land use, and zoning. It's more accurate to say all of those were changed in 2011 by Bill Horn and his board, specifically for NCR. According to the clerk of the board's records, the only documentation in support of rezoning was a three-and-a-half-page letter from 2005, an endorsement from a state politician, and a newspaper article about recycling. That was it. The letter was full of false assertions, including that the site required, quote, "minimal grading." Now they want to blow up 250,000 tons of rock on a hillside? Destroying the local environment in the name of recycling makes no sense, especially when the county's 2017 waste study said it isn't needed. This is about making money. The rezoning and land use changes were opposed by the county's community sponsor groups, the Planning Department, the Planning Commission, and the city of Escondido. All were ignored and residents in the area were unaware that the rezoning was taking place. By 2011, the Planning Department and the Planning Commission reversed their earlier recommendations and agreed with Supervisor Horn about rezoning in the GPU update. The rezoning solely benefited Hilltop, no one else. The parcels were spot-zoned. In 2014, the Planning Department required an EIR for this project. By September of 2019, the 15183 exemption was accepted by the Planning Department the second time they had reversed themselves on a major decision in favor of Hilltop, although the project had not changed. Hilltop's attorneys say it's too late to address the rezoning from 2011 because they know it would not survive if voted on today. Please consider rezoning these parcels to make them consistent with the county's land use policies. In the meantime, I ask the board to reinstate the EIR requirement, show us that this new board is willing to listen to the health concerns of hundreds of residents, and correct the environmentally reckless decisions of the previous board and planning department. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be 0156, 0156. Please press star six to unmute.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is George Corser. And what we're examining here is an appeal of a ruling by the zoning administrator. Do our supervisors know who their zoning administrator is? Or what her background and capabilities are? Or his or her qualifications in Sequo? A bit of research finds the zoning administrator is actually the Director of Planning and Development Services. However, there's no record of the Director of Planning and Development Services ever acting in that function. Instead, an arbiter, a member of the director's staff, acts as the zoning administrator, effectively resulting in staffers reporting to a staffer. Every zoning administrator ruling we investigated was found in favor of the developer. Developers have battled, have battled 1,000 since 2012. This can be rapidly verified by visiting the zoning administrator's site. Recent zoning administrator rulings also concluded with a Sequo 15183 exemption from environmental review. This preordained process obstructed an EIR for the recycling development. This is a corruption of a public process. This is an abuse of discretion by staff and the director of PDS. Again, staffers presented this to another staffer at a zoning hearing and the determination of an exemption was executed. The PDS director then made a decision to exempt the project from an EIR. Is anyone overseeing the actions of the PDS director slash zoning administrator? We strongly urge the county to request the California Attorney General to...
Our next speaker will be 4233, 4233. Please press star six to unmute. 4233, if you'd like to speak on this item, please press star six to unmute. All right, we'll come back. The next speaker will be 1210, 1210. Please press star six to unmute.
Hello, my name is Timery Bixler. I reside near the project area, and I would like to briefly mention my background as it relates to my comments. I worked as an environmental planner for 13 years for the Department of the Navy, both at Marine Corps Air Station Miramar and at the Naval Facilities Engineering Command in San Diego. I managed all levels of federal environmental documentation, including the EIS for the relocation of Marine Corps helicopters from El Toro and Tustin to Miramar. Before that, I wrote and managed state Sequo documents for seven years for San Diego-based planning companies. I'm sharing this in order to illustrate an understanding of the environmental review requirements at both federal and state levels. Firstly, the communities surrounding the project site have been denied the transparent process of a full standalone EIR to review and comment upon, as well as denied a role in its approval or the development of any mitigation measures because of the exemption. When the original EIR was required, public review identified many unstated potential impacts and flaws in the applicant-provided documentation. It was at this point that the county removed the EIR requirement and exempted the project. In 20 years of experience with both NEPA and Sequo projects, this decision to deny full public review had never and would never have been made. An EIR must be processed for this project, including full build-out, in order to analyze cumulative impacts and address incremental growth. All a project has to do is get its first approval and then use internal administrative Sequo approvals to allow incremental growth. Under this exemption, those cumulative impacts from today's project, as well as future growth, will escape review and be beyond what was studied in the general plan EIR. Please recommend the EIR process be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be 7565, 7565. Please press star six to unmute.
Yes, my name is Norma Eckblad, and I am a resident of the Montro Homeowners Association. And I just want to say I've been on the phone for the entire meeting from nine o'clock on and heard all the praises for the new supervisor board and the environmental requirements and implementation. And so I know that you're responding to an old board, but I ask that you hear our concerns and that you implement the requirement of a full environmental impact based on what is today and what is to come. And I really respect all the people that have spoken, and they're so eloquent. I'm a homeowner, and I care about our community and the environment, and I appreciate the board's consideration. Please listen to our concerns, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Recalling 4233, 4233. Please press star six to unmute if you'd like to speak on this item. 4233? No response?
No, this is, sorry, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
This is your constant companion this afternoon, Dr. Peter Anderson with Sierra Club San Diego, and we're calling for a full EIR on this project. This should be a no-brainer. There are numerous uncertainties associated with this project. First of all, we need to know if this is MSCP land, if it's in a wildlife corridor. According to the Sierra Club maps, it is MSCP land. Does it need a habitat loss permit? That would require an EIR to ascertain whether that would really be needed. The other uncertainties are, who is this zoning administrator that a previous speaker talked about? Is, would that a legal process? Likewise, we need a reputable developer, a reputable development company to conduct an EIR, because in the past, this project has violated our environmental standards by doing grading on the site. We trust that the guidelines. The fact that this stretches incredulity, they're going to be...
We're having a hard time with that caller, and they just dropped off. So with that, that concludes public testimony on this item. Chair Fletcher.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who called in on this item. Let me open it up for my colleagues, kind of share thoughts and perspectives on this, and then we'll come to some type of resolution and make a decision on how best to move. Anybody want to go first? Supervisor Lawson Reamer?
Sure. I'm honestly happy to kick us off. I mean, this was incredibly helpful to listen to all this testimony and to get, you know, such a robust viewpoint from so many stakeholders. You know, frankly, based on the commentary raised by the public, I think we need an EIR. I have significant concerns related to this project and the potential impacts on the environment related to air quality, noise, traffic, and greenhouse gas emissions, and feel an EIR is warranted. And so I would move to just grant the appeals and require an EIR. And so I would, my question is for staff, how would we direct the preparation of an EIR for this project?
Thank you, Supervisor Lawson Reamer. Deputy Counsel Bill Witt will be responding to that.
Supervisor? I believe Mark Slovic has some language that he could provide for you related to that.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer to the chair. As part of the action, the board would find the following. The general plan EIR did not analyze these specific project impacts in detail, which will occur to the project's proximity to nearby residential uses from the traffic, air quality, noise, and aesthetic impacts resulting from the project's industrial operation. Implementation of uniformly applied development standards or policies from the general plan EIR will not substantially mitigate these peculiar impacts from the project. Unlike other industrial uses, this project is peculiarly sited in proximity to other non-industrial and sensitive land uses. The unique topographical and climatic conditions of this site need to be studied further to determine how nearby sensitive land uses will be affected from the significant dust, noise, and odor impacts from this particular project. The comprehensive environmental review of an EIR is required to inform the public fully of the project's specific impacts, ways to mitigate significant impacts, and any alternatives to the project that will reduce or avoid impacts. In short, additional analysis is required to study the peculiar impacts of the project, which were not analyzed in the general plan EIR for this specific site, with its unique features, location, and surrounding uses.
Okay, that's helpful. And if I was to additionally like to request that we undertake a regional capacity analysis for all types of recycling facilities and needs, and that the staffer turn to the board with a report on existing capacity and projected additional capacity that may be needed to meet state mandates and county diversion goals. We could include that as well as a supplement to this EIR, correct?
Supervisor Lawson Reamer, we would have the Department of Public Works lead that effort, and as part of the effort, it would take about 25 months for us to be able to move forward with that comprehensive study. And at the same time, Public Works is also looking at the capacity for purposes of our landfills within the region that should be ready in June of 2022. For purposes of the effort that you are highlighting, we would need $250,000 towards that effort, so that could be something that we could refer to budget as well for your consideration.
Got it, okay. I mean, I'm prepared to make a motion, but I don't now, Chair Fletcher, but I also don't want to cut off discussion. So, you know, should I, should we let other folks talk or ask questions and we can come back?
Yeah, that's fine. We can, we can, we can come back. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the efforts. I have a couple of questions for staff. My computer's been going, or my internet's been going in and out today. There was a mention of illegal grading, and I kind of cut out, cut in and out. Could you reiterate what was said about the grading, this illegal grading, if it was, what we know about it?
Supervisor Desmond to the chair. There was illegal grading conducted on the site back in 2008. As part of the analysis that went into this project, we studied those unauthorized impacts. So as a condition of this project, those impacts would be mitigated. That includes the preservation of open space on the property in perpetuity, including the purchase of off-site open space as well to compensate for the impacts that were caused by that unauthorized grading.
Was the applicant the owner of the property in 2008?
Supervisor Desmond to the chair, that's correct.
Okay, then I have a, you know, I don't know if I agree with a full EIR being done. I do agree that, you know, further analysis should be done on the dust, the traffic, and the noise, and, you know, I may be supporting the motion, I may not, but the, I do agree that more analysis needs to be done. I also noticed that the, the Planning Commission had removed or reduced the ongoing monitoring of outbound trucks to have it stop after two years. I find it kind of ironic that the applicant is saying they only want two trucks a day going out of the facility, but there's going to be, I guess, unlimited coming in. I think we should have ongoing monitoring constantly, not just after two years. And if there's a way that, and I know this maybe isn't part of the EIR, but if we could have that monitoring be either electronic or separate from the applicant, some sort of independent type of monitoring of the trucks and vehicles going in and out of here, you know, if it's approved, you know, once this EIR is complete, I would like to see that as well. So that's basically my comments. I want to make sure that truck monitoring goes in place to perpetuity on this one. Thank you.
Question for staff, would that type of thing be a component of an EIR?
Chair, not necessarily. What I, what we suggest is that that just be part of the board's recommendation that those are considered by the director when we prepare the EIR and move forward with the project.
Okay, okay, fair enough.
I'd like that. Thank you.
Okay, supervisor, we can certainly include that. Any other comments from colleagues? So Supervisor Lawson Reamer, if you want to do your motion, and then I think...
Sure. Great.
Supervisor Desmond's concerned about the monitoring of trucks and then...
Yeah, I'm happy to restate my motion, and I'm more than happy to include the monitoring trucks in that. So I think the, just two core parts of what I'm moving is, one is to grant the appeals and require an EIR, and then additionally, request that we undertake a regional capacity analysis for all types of recycling facility needs, and that the staffer turn to the board with a report on existing capacity and projected capacity to meet mandates and diversion goals, and refer that to, the $250,000 to budget for funding.
Perfect. I'm happy to second that. Any comments, questions on that? All right.
Does that include the truck monitoring?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Aye.
Vice Chair Vargas.
Aye.
Chair Fletcher.
Fletcher, aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
All right, we're going to move to agenda item 17. I don't know, let me ask the clerk, do we have any requests to speak on this item?
Chair Fletcher, we did have one request to speak. That individual no longer has requested to speak on this item, so we don't have any speakers.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? All right, we have a motion by myself, seconded by Supervisor Anderson to approve this item. Ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer. Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, I'm sorry, you guys moved too fast for me. Is it, we're on 17?
That's right.
Okay, aye.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Vargas.
Vargas, yes.
Chair Fletcher.
Fletcher, aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
So our final item of the day, agenda item 18, bridging the rural digital divide. I'd ask members of the public who wish to speak on this item to call in at this point. This is brought forward by Supervisors Lawson Reamer and Supervisor Anderson. I'll go to them to make some brief introductory comments. We'll hear from the public and then we'll come back. Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Sure, so first of all, I'd just like to thank Supervisor Anderson for co-authoring this board letter with me, and also to thank Executive Director Akarada and his staff over at Sandag for all their support, and Deputy District Director Schmidt from Caltrans. And I absolutely apologize to my colleagues for the short run around this, although I think the presentation from Sandag and Caltrans will, you know, help illuminate why this was so urgent to move so quickly. Frankly, this is a pioneering project that puts our three agencies at the forefront of the actual work we need to do to bridge the digital divide. It's fiscally prudent, we're going to be able to cut the overall cost of conduit installation by half immediately out of the gate. And then, moving from there, we split the cost three ways with Sandag and Caltrans. So it's really leveraging our county dollars three to one. And our county and the residents of an incorporated area will get 18 miles of public fire fiber plus conduit to lease to internet service providers, really for about a sixth of the usual cost. So, you know, I want to say we all have heard a lot from Supervisor Anderson about broadband and the fact that his residents don't have broadband. So I think this definitely is a step in the right direction towards ensuring that, you know, we have broadband accessibility to many more residents in our, in our community, in our county, and that we're making, that we're making those services available to all. You know, fundamentally, this pandemic where we, where people have been asked to work at home for often over a year has exposed digital access inequity as a fundamental contributor to inequity more broadly. And so this cost share, I'm really excited about it because it will not only help connect our rural and BIPOC communities in East County, but can also become a model for how we cost effectively bridge the digital divide in other parts of our county and communities. So with that, I would move to approve this item. And let me just clarify, do I need to make the amendment in this, in my motion, Supervisor Fletcher, to clarify that this, we're looking to fund this immediately if possible, if we get four votes today?
Perfect.
Great.
Supervisor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank Supervisor Lawson Reamer for co-authoring this board letter. You are correct, I am absolutely focused on broadband. Within five miles of this project, there is a population of 225,000 people. 29% of these individuals are low-income households, 38% are minorities, over 15% are seniors, and 22% are under 18 years old. So this is going to be a huge boom in success for these folks. I know that there was great concern over how we were going to fund this. This project is really important, and I think it needs to be done, but perhaps we're going to get a presentation, Chair Fletcher, we're getting a presentation or no, on the, on, on coming up?
I don't, I don't know that we are.
Okay, well, because I, what I'd like to do, and my co-author doesn't know this, is perhaps what we could do is ask Sandag when they actually need our money, and then amend this to say that if we could hold out for ARPA consideration, and if not, move ahead with county budget. But if we could hold out to see if the timing works, we still move ahead, we still make the commitment, we just will have more flexibility in where that money comes from.
So Supervisor Anderson, we can do it one of a number of ways. Supervisor Lawson Reamer amended it where if we got four votes, we would just appropriate the $1.4 million now. If you, if you'd like to wait, we could, we could wait.
Well, I want to make the commitment, I'm just wondering, if they don't need the funding prior to July 1, we may have some flexibility, I don't know, I'm, you know.
Can I just make a kind of a suggestion? I think the point that, that we all spoke at length about yesterday was our ARPA funds, right? And it was helpful conversation to get clear that we're going to be all working with county staff. So what I would love to do is personally, and hopefully Supervisor Anderson can also personally, work with county staff to ensure that if, if allowed, if federal guidelines allow, we backfill the funding for this project from ARPA funds, but we go ahead and do the appropriation today, but we're not taking that off the table. But we will work through the county staff process and the framework process as sort of outlined yesterday to encourage staff to include that in the framework if allowed under federal guidelines.
So.
Thank you for that.
I think, I think it's reasonable, we can basically vote to appropriate the funding today, understanding if a, if a non-county source of funding is available, then the county doesn't need to fund it.
Yeah.
So I, and I think that, that, that was, that was in your motion, that we would vote to appropriate the funds today with the understanding if a non-county source is found, then the county wouldn't need to fund it.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. I believe we have a brief presentation from Sandag. So let's, let's, let's turn it over to that, and then here are our public speakers, and then we'll come back and wrap this up.
Thank you Chair Fletcher. As you indicated, we do have one request for group presentation. I see two of the individuals have dialed in. We'll go ahead and unmute those two individuals and pull up your PowerPoint. Last four digits, 7654 and 2714. If there is another caller in your group that has dialed in, they could press star nine, and that will indicate to us that they are part of your group presentation. But if the two callers that we have allowed to speak, if you could press star six to unmute your line, and I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
I can go ahead and go first, this is Antoinette Meyer.
Go ahead, thank you.
And this is Chris Schmidt from Caltrans.
Antoinette, go ahead.
Hassan is going to kick off the presentation, Hassan Akarada from Sandag.
Don't see him.
Maybe having some technical difficulties.
Why don't you just take it away? What's, I don't think this is a super controversial item, so why don't you just go ahead and get started?
Looks like he may have.
Okay.
Joined, if you can press star six.
Yeah, this is Ray Trainer with Sandag. I'm the Chief of Planning and Innovation, and I'm stepping in for Hassan Akarada.
Okay, great, thank you, please proceed with the presentation.
So thank you Chair Fletcher and Supervisors Desmond, Vargas, Anderson, Lawson Reamer, again Ray Trainer, Chief of Planning and Innovation. And today, we just want to express our gratitude to the entire county board for taking a few moments to consider agenda item 18, to help really bring a more tangible step toward bridging the digital divide for the communities in our region, especially in the rural areas. The team that we're going to present this afternoon are very grateful for the partnership, both with Caltrans and the County of San Diego for this opportunity. Expanding the digital infrastructure and connectivity in our region is really critical, not only for transportation, but the multitude of benefits that we think this project will expand beyond mobility, it's going to have priceless impacts. We think that being able to provide reliable and affordable broadband connectivity for the more than 225,000 residents that live within the State Route 67 corridor communities is a really great demonstration of how we can partner together to be able to solve the digital divide. Next slide, please. I'd like to provide just some very brief background. Last year in August, Governor Newsom issued Executive Order 7320, which directed various state agencies to take specific actions to expand high-speed broadband statewide. Caltrans, one of our regional partners, is one of those agencies that was identified. And they play a critical role in helping to develop what they call their DIG ONCE policy. And they've identified corridors where fiber optic cable could be added to transportation projects that could help critical gaps. They're also partnering with internet service providers to extend the infrastructure and service into these areas. And so I'm really proud that Sandag has taken its action to also provide regional support. Back in January, the Board of Directors adopted a resolution committing to close the digital divide in our region. As a result of that action, we formed a digital divide back task force that includes both public and private sector stakeholders, and we're truly thankful that the County of San Diego is an active member of that. This task force is supporting Sandag as we develop this digital equity strategy and its resulting action plan. And we've joined forces with counterparts across Southern California. That would be the Southern California Association of Governments, known as SCAG, and other coalition leaders across the state to really collaborate and develop a number of supportive policies, as well as a coordinated approach to try to rapidly deploy broadband solutions across the state. We believe that there's a tremendous opportunity before us to show how both state, federal, and regional governments are serious about ending the digital divide, and we owe it to the people of San Diego County. And so now I'd like to hand it over to Antoinette Meyer, who's Sandag's Director of Mobility and Innovation. She'll step through a very brief presentation on this particular project. Thank you.
Next slide, please. Thank you Ray. So a key strategy for expanding access to broadband has been to identify corridors where there are currently gaps in the fiber network, and then work with Caltrans to implement their DIG ONCE policy by adding fiber to any projects that are planned for those corridors. So we recently learned that SR 67 is slated for a significant pavement rehabilitation project this summer, and it covers about 18 miles from just north of the San Diego River Bridge in Lakeside to State Route 78 in Ramona. Next slide. The project really presents an ideal opportunity to fill a significant gap in broadband infrastructure. You'll see the map on the slide identifies census blocks, blocks where fiber is present in the region, and there is a major gap along the 67 corridor highlighted in green. So we're proposing to add micro trenching and fiber conduit to the rehab project. This adds about $6 to $7 million, and the state has identified a large portion of that additional funding, but there is still a shortfall, and some local funding is required. And because this project goes to bid later this month, and we definitely don't want to slow down the schedule of the roadway rehab work, the funding has to be secured by next week on May 13. Next slide, please. There are many benefits for adding fiber to the current pavement work. I think first and foremost, it's already been mentioned, it's the opportunity to expand affordable high-speed broadband service to rural communities. Less than half of our rural residents have fixed broadband service available to them, and it's really needed for teleworking and distance learning and telehealth and economic growth. So adding the fiber conduit can attract private investment. This is not an area that internet service providers are likely to invest in on their own because there just isn't enough of a population there to make business sense. It's also unlikely that fiber would ever get funded and prioritized as a standalone project. So adding fiber to this project makes a lot of sense, given the state's directives to DIG ONCE and partner with broadband providers. Also, combining fiber with this project provides us with a significant cost savings of at least $5 million. And then, fiber also allows us to connect the corridors' traffic signals and field elements to the Caltrans network. So this will provide better traffic monitoring and real-time traffic information. It allows Caltrans the ability to control signals during power shutdowns or evacuations and incidents. And there are other intelligent transportation solutions that can be deployed to address traffic safety and traffic flow once that corridor is connected. So I'm going to turn it over to Chris Schmidt from Caltrans to quickly describe some of those transportation opportunities and the tight timeline that we're working under. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, next slide, please. You know, as Antoinette alluded to, there are a number of planned improvements along the corridor. Just a reminder that the paving job is very important, and we definitely want to make sure we deliver that. And with this project, we'll be able to add a number of additional elements that are listed here on this slide, and then additionally, future opportunities to more actively manage the corridor. And that's a conversation that we want to have further with county staff in terms of how we can link our facilities with yours and better integrate the overall operation of the transportation network. Next slide, please. The most important aspect here is timing. I know this is very sudden for you all to make this decision. We're very thankful for considering this item today. As Antoinette mentioned, the funding is actually going to be voted by the Transportation Commission on May 13. And by that time, we have to document the local contribution to this funding package that was mentioned earlier to bring this about. So this opportunity is just imminent for us, and we're working very diligently to put that package together for the commission, and we really seek your support here today to make it happen. Thank you.
All right, let me ask the clerk if there's any other requests for public comment on this item.
Thank you Chair Fletcher, yes, we have one individual that has a request to speak on this item. Last four digits are 3562, 3562. If you could please press star six to unmute your line, and state your name for the audio.
Thank, thank you very much. My name is Steve Pontell, President/CEO of National Community Renaissance. Very proud to be one of your affordable housing partners. Also been very much involved in the Southern California-wide effort to end the digital divide. I do want to thank San Diego County for participating from day one in our efforts to bring Southern California together to, to address these issues. Special shout out to Chairman Fletcher and Nick Machioni, who participated from the very beginning. And recently Supervisor Lawson Reamer's participation is very much appreciated. Two just quick points, one, we are collectively, one of the few times, all seven Southern California counties working together to go to the federal government for a $4 billion ask, and working on a coordinated $4.8 billion ask from the state government. And the opportunity to be able to acquire those resources is real. And this is a perfect example of the way to make sure we're shovel-ready and ready to go as the funding becomes available. San Diego's example in taking the lead of this is something we hope to use with other counties and jurisdictions as well. So support is very much, appreciate all of your effort, thank you for the time.
And that concludes public testimony in this item, Chair Fletcher.
All right, noble endeavor. I appreciate having been a part in some of the early days of some of this work, and appreciate the work of our Sandag board members who are doing the difficult work and who brought this forward. We have a motion by Supervisor Lawson Reamer to approve the recommendations with the change to appropriate up to $1.4 million in county fundings with the understanding that if other funding sources become available, those would be utilized first. Second by Supervisor Anderson, seeing no additional comments, I would ask the clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you Supervisor Anderson.
Aye.
Supervisor Lawson Reamer.
Aye.
Supervisor Desmond.
Aye.
Vice Chair Vargas.
Vargas, aye.
Chair Fletcher.
Fletcher, aye.
The motion passes unanimously with all supervisors being present and voting aye.
That concludes the business before the board today. We'll now proceed with adjournments in memory. We have two, the first adjournment will be presented by Supervisor Jim Desmond.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. The adjournment today is in memory of Andy Valenta. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in his memory, a 33-year-old firefighter paramedic. He passed away on April 25, 2021 with his, with a battle of cancer. Firefighter Valenta joined the Vista Fire Department in 2009 and was a valuable member of the firefighting profession. Andy was known for his boisterous personality. He touched everyone he met with his infectious smile, his positivity, and compassion. Andy was surrounded by friends and family and received tremendous support from his extended fire family and the community. He leaves behind his wife Kaylee and two young daughters, Lily and Grace. Our thoughts are with his family and the entire firefighting community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I would like to adjourn our San Diego County Board of Supervisors meeting today in honor of the life of Joseph F. Seokan Jr. Joe was a Navy veteran, a husband, a father, a grandfather. Joe Seokan was my friend. I first got to know Joe decades ago when I was county appointee to the Veteran Service Advisory Board, and Joe would often attend our meetings. He was a frequent participant and visitor at other meets of the United Veterans Council, One VA, and many other, other meetings. Joe had an incredibly warm spirit, an incredibly friendly individual. At time, being in the environment of what at times could be cantankerous old veterans, Joe always stood out as such a positive soul and such a caring individual. And, and I was fortunate to know him, and I think everyone who knew him speaks of him much the same. much the same. A very, very, very special man, tremendously accomplished, someone who loved his country, he loved his family dearly. Joe was responsible for many Navy firsts. He produced silkscreens for the first line production model of the F4H Phantom. He became one of the early Navy journalists to go to work with the Armed Forces Vietnam Network in Saigon. He covered that as a journalist for the military, including the attacks on the American Embassy. Joe was also a veteran of the attack in Beirut. He was present and was a Purple Heart recipient for wounds suffered during the terrorist attacks on Marine barracks in Beirut, Lebanon on October 23, 1983. And some of my most vivid memories of conversations with Joe were having him talk about that experience, and the great difficulty and the great challenge and what they went through and how he carried that with him for the rest of his life. And he would articulate how that experience in particular was a, was a part of his ongoing commitment to serving the veterans of San Diego County when he retired. In addition to all of that, Joe was a sixth-degree black belt in judo, and he became the training camp manager and assistant coach for the 1980 and 1984 U.S. Olympic judo teams. He retired from the Navy as a Master Chief Journalist in 1986, and upon retirement, he continued to serve as a volunteer at the USS Midway. And every time I went to the Midway, Joe was there. He had his flight jacket on, a smile on his face. And so on behalf of the entire Board of Supervisors, we adjourn today's meeting in honor of Joe and send our deepest condolences to his wife Mary, also a Navy veteran, to their three adult children, Joe, Ramon, Lisa, and many other family members. A grateful nation appreciates Joe's service, and a young Marine that he befriended values his warmth and his spirit. And with that, our meeting today stands adjourned.
The board will now recess into closed session to consider those matters listed under item 35 on yesterday's agenda. If there are any reportable actions, they will be reported out after the conclusion of closed session today. The next regular meeting of the board will take place on Tuesday, May 18, 2021, at 9:00